We'll call for the City Council, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
And for the Housing Authority.
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Brazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
Do you read item one into the record, please?
Certainly, as soon as I read my report for your compliance with the Brown Act, the agenda for the January 26, 2010 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, January 21, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item before this joint meeting body today is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding proposed Pacific Pool project, 1A's council motion approving design development plan and authorizing staff to proceed with completion of construction documents.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Housing Authority. I'll go to George Chapchan, Director of Community Services and Parks. George?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Housing Authority. We were before you on December 15 with the design of the Pacific Pool, the L-shaped pool. In that meeting, the council directed us to do three things and come back to you with these three things. One is reduce the amount of space, staff space, in the building, which we've taken a look at. Estimate the space, the savings of that space, once it's eliminated, and then estimate the cost to upgrade to LEED certification, silver, gold, and platinum. And we've done that. Once Peter gets the PowerPoint up, take a look at the space. Again, this is what council asks us to do. This was the space we brought to you on December 15. It was approximately 5,000 square feet. The bottom portion shows the second floor, lifeguard tower, which you asked us to eliminate, and the stairwell. Most of that space up top is public space, the restroom areas, the lobby. The space that's in kind of purple would be the office staff area that we worked on. Peter, can you go to the next slide, please? Here's kind of an overlay. We were able to push the staff space back, eliminate approximately 1,000 square feet of staff area. This is basically as much as we could do and still provide some space for the staff to work out of if and when the operations do increase. Again, reducing the staff lobby area, the staff seating area. At this point, we anticipate a number of staff going in and out of that area, so working with the consultants, we've been able to reduce it by 1,000 square feet, as you instructed. The other space, really, we couldn't touch. It's by code, we need all of that space for restrooms and storage area, that sort of thing. Peter, if you can go to the next slide. So this is what the current configuration looks like in its reduction. Again, the appendix right there, mostly storage space and some staff space up there. To the outside of that, there's some outdoor storage area that we created for the pool equipment. Peter, if you can go. The pool cover, yeah. Again, it was 1,000 square feet that we were able to reduce, and that saved us about Top floor was about $170,000, $180,000 that we eliminated in that space reduction. Going to LEED certification levels, we have currently budgeted a silver certification. If we were to go for the gold certification, it would be $400,000, additional $200,000, and platinum apparently is 1.2 million. We do have the consultant here that can answer any questions you may have about that LEEDs And how to get the platinum in this site, and as the consultant will probably explain more, going to be very hard to get to a platinum because the site conditions are very narrow. But it is green power purchase agreements, thermal comfort verification, cogeneration plants, wind turbines, geothermal heating, cooling, so all of these are what go into, apparently, platinum certification. And again, the payback period, we're really not quite sure at this point. Apparently, they have to go through design charrettes to really find out when that payback period would be. And we can come back to you with that once they do the design charrettes.
Charrette.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. And questions? We also have the old designs, if you want us to bring it back up at this point. We have the consultant here who can answer any questions you have on pool, on LEEDs.
Friedman.
Thank you. Does that lifeguard tower have to be replicated somewhere else on the site? We're not going to put it on the building?
No, it was additional space. We thought it would be appropriate for them to be up there to oversee the entire facility. But at this point, Santa Clarita has one, but they have a larger facility, three pools that they really have to oversee. So I think we can do without it. It would have been nice to have it, but I think staff can do without it at this point.
I understand that you need to do the LEED charrette to really have an understanding of what your offset's going to be in your cost to operate, but I'm wondering if the consultant has any idea at all, based on other projects, whether this is something that would, if we went to gold, let's say, would pay itself back? Never? 10 years, 5 years, you know, any kind of?
Here's Larry Ryan.
Idea, because, of course, the operating costs are some of the larger expenses that the city's going to have, so.
Absolutely.
Rather than the actual construction.
Larry?
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Larry Ryan. I'm a partner with RJM Design Group. What we have is a fairly extensive design team. In addition to the typical members, we also have a LEED consultant who's going to help shepherd us through the process. And the idea is to really have a brainstorming, or charrette, as it's called, to really look at all the options for pushing the envelope with regard to the LEED, you know, ultimate certification. It's a little bit premature. We're confident we can get the certification, and then it just becomes a function of opportunities on the site. And you know, we're really rather limited. We don't have, you know, expansive areas to be doing bioswales and permeable pavements and some of the other more aggressive, you know, opportunities that boost the overall points. And so when you start talking about, you know, recapturing costs or, you know, return on investment for money spent, it's really difficult now because if you want to really push it to a different level, you may have to do something rather significant. And an extreme example would be to create a cogeneration plan on site, where you would generate your own power. In reality, you probably wouldn't choose to do that. You'd never really accommodate, you know, any kind of a cost payback on it, but there would be another benefit in terms of being off the grid. You could achieve a different LEED certification, but that would be a policy decision, certainly difficult to corroborate just with a financial payback. So what our goal is, is to give you like a menu of some of these options so that we, as a design team and you as the, you know, approving body, could say, you know, I think it's worth it for our community here to maybe push the envelope and not just get certification, but take it to a silver level. And that would be a reasonable expenditure to get it and be a, you know, a good statement for, you know, sustainable design. That's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, but there's such big variables at this juncture that it's hard to really say specifically.
How much of those cost estimates are based on the certification and how much of it is based on the actual construction? So in other words, if we decided to do LEED equivalent but not get the certification, how much of a savings would that be?
You know, the costs that we're talking about are increasing the construction costs. You know, you already-
The certification itself?
No. No.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Draymond.
Couple of things. Well, I think they're primarily for Mr. Chapchan. You mentioned just briefly in one sentence, the upstairs. You're talking about that observation area.
Yes.
So just so the public isn't misunderstanding, that really wasn't a, oh, boy, a lifeguard tower. You have facilities for lifeguards that will be placed appropriately, and that's always been in the design. This upstairs area that some of us were concerned would simply be a congregating area for people there and also incur cost for maintenance and not to mention the construction of it to begin with. Is that element now gone? Because what you were showing us here and which are also in the report are, they're not elevations, so it's-
Yes, yes. The second floor is gone. There's still an observation area from the ground floor.
All right. And, second, were you saying that the potential for a design charrette was only if we were headed for a platinum certification, platinum, LEED platinum level, or any LEED certification?
I believe it was any LEED certification.
Any LEED certification. Question, one more. How does that fit in in terms of a timeline breaking ground?
Well, I think it was factored into our timeline in terms of doing the charrette. We knew the council was going to go at least with at least a silver certification. Well, we had it budgeted for silver certification.
That would have been my bet, too.
Yeah, well, and it is factored into the timeline. So our plan is to start in summer 2010, if all goes well with the construction drawings, and open it up next year after a 12-month period.
I have a question. Does the silver level include the, and the 200,000, does that include the photovoltaic cells, or?
Larry, I don't think that does. That's not part of the photovoltaic. We'll still have to work with GWP on that one.
Okay, so what does the 200 include? That wouldn't be normal cost of construction with glazed windows, et cetera.
Yeah, it's like a menu of items, and these are just, you know, round numbers. We typically don't discuss, you know, increments like this in the typical process until the items have been identified. But in terms of trying to anticipate questions that might come up today, we want to be able to respond with some type of a parameter of potential cost. I mean, it's going to be everything from, you know, in the architecture, Jeremy, what are some of the key elements that would be?
It would go anywhere from, I'm Jeremy with WLS Architects. You include anything from energy-efficient appliances, from HVAC equipment, it would be from low-e glazing, it would be from higher installation value on the installation material that we use. Those are the kind of things that build into the project without having incurred additional costs. So we can fairly easily achieve certified.
Right.
Right, that's the point, that those are the normal, the double paint windows, the low-e windows, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, you're attaching 200,000 to that, but that's a standard sort of building, a more efficient air conditioning system?
Actually, that was to account for getting up to a silver level as opposed to just certified.
Okay.
Also, the use of recycled materials, you know, those are just things that you would do that may be inspired by trying to attain a higher certification.
Okay, Mr. Starbird, then Najarian, and then Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, just a note of information, and this is referenced in the reports you have on this evening's City Council agenda regarding green building standards. And I have to admit, I had to go back and pull the minutes of the meeting of July 1 of 2008 to remind me what the council actually did. But it was pretty clear in your direction then that public projects you directed would achieve LEED silver certification, this project being a public project, that based on that direction, staff should have included in the budget adequate funds to get us to silver.
Mr. Najarian.
George, or Mr. Ryan, would it make sense on that second-floor room that we got rid of to make a flat roof over that area to perhaps have at least the ability to walk on it and to use it as an outdoor area for training or all the things that accompany the pool activities?
We could, right now, the way, the newest design, it is a flat roof area, and then we can design a way where we can allow people to go up, but then again, we're talking about square footage increase for circulation, then we have to add a stairwell now to the second floors. So, you know, I'm not sure, I'm sure somebody can speak to the training aspect of it. I'm not sure what additional training that would be achieved on the second floor that could have been on the first floor. Again, it's just a direction we need from the council if you want to put the stairwell back in. And I think stairwell itself, we took out about-
I mean, can you hang an external stairwell along the side of the building?
I will have to check on the code compliance of, you're talking about like a ship ladder type? I have to-
No, no, not that extreme, but those, you know, precast stairwells that are external and-
You know, my recommendation would be not to build it at all at this point, just leave it flat. We have adequate space inside.
Okay. Mr. Draymond.
I have a question, and, Mr. Chapchan, I'm not sure if this is one that you can answer, but what projects have we built in this city so far that are, and I'm not talking about outside development, either city projects or city partnered projects that are LEED certified or LEED silver?
I'm not certain which projects. I know the ARC is leading that way as well, but I'm not sure what other projects there are in the city that we built.
Probably Cedar. Cedar would be a park, but I don't know whether that can get LEED certification or not, but-
Yeah, that was before the council established the policy.
The WEP building? It's going to be silver, I think.
What I'm getting at is, did we have design charrettes to achieve LEED silver equivalent on that or any of those projects?
I don't know. Again, I'm not sure.
Not sure what project we might have done since July of '08.
No, no, forget the deadline with regard to the ordinance, I mean, the resolution you were talking about, Mr. Starbird. I'd just like to know what projects. We have clearly built some projects, regardless of that timeframe, that are LEED certified or LEED silver or what have you. I'm just not sure why we are, we need a design charrette to achieve LEED silver.
Yeah, I think this is the first parks project. I'll have to ask the consultant-
I said, I'm not sure that you can answer this question.
Right.
Because I'm talking more broadly beyond just parks and recs.
But I think this is our first project that's actually LEED silver certified or going that way. The others, I think, were started before the policy was implemented, the council policy.
No, I, and I understand that.
Larry, do you want to take that?
What we did is, you know, the team orchestrator was identified what we thought would be a helpful process for our own internal team, you know, the site, the architect, the HVAC plumber, to identify things that would be, you know, part of the strategy, work in concert with our LEED consultant and say, hey, this is a more effective way. I've done this on another job beyond just our team's capability, but we're bringing in the LEED experts, so to speak, to help us organize and to strategize the most effective way to go forward. Rather than just presenting that to you at the 11th hour, saying, okay, it's great, we're all done, we thought it'd be a helpful thing to sit down with staff and invite even yourselves to participate so that when we're talking about expending additional funds for a certain point rating, that there would be a common point of reference or understanding, rather than just unfolding it.
So, Mr. Ryan, am I to understand then that you feel we need a design charrette so that the professionals, that this city is hiring to deliver to us a LEED certified silver or what have you building, that we need a design charrette to do that?
Well, I'm not sure the terminology implies anything more than just the sharing of the information. We're going to sit down, we're going to look at options, we're going to evaluate them so that when we come to you and say, this building's going to cost, say, $350,000 more to do this, that that's not just sprung on you at the 11th hour, that you've been in a meeting, you've seen the other alternatives, and you can say, you know, collectively that I think that's a good investment by the city. It's nothing really different than what we would do ourselves in the privacy of our own office. We would just invite, you know, staff and even extend the invitation to council and say, would you like to be, you know, part of that dialogue and exercise? You know, we're going to do it anyway.
Well, it's the word "exercise" that concerns me at this point. We're talking about a project that has been, for a variety of reasons, and you can assign whatever adjective you like, sitting around languishing on hold for a very long time with a highly impacted, in a highly impacted part of the city that is waiting for a, quite frankly, as I keep calling it, a wet spot in the pavement in which they can put their bodies on a hot July afternoon. And I understand and I support the direction of council and the Housing Authority to make this a sustainable project. And I held my tongue when we were doing that because I support that. But my concern is how it delays the project and whether or not it is worth using this as an educational tool when we have state money that is hanging out there, that is funding part of this. We have CDBG money hanging out there that is supporting part of this with a project with a large population sitting out there waiting for our pool. And if it's a matter of something you all can handle, I mean, we see the numbers you've presented. This is hardly the 11th hour. We've asked for it.
Right.
So, for example, you're talking about a $200,000 price tag related to silver. So how more 11th hour is this going to be? You're going to have your design charrette and then say, yep, it's $200,000. I mean, please. Let me remind you again, there are, just in 91205 zip code in this city, 10, more than 10,000 department units, just in that one zip code. They're waiting for a pool. Right? It's taken a long time to get here. Mr. Najarian, was it last summer? No, it couldn't have been, the summer before last, when we were sitting down at the Pacific Edison Building, you and I and Mr. Quintero, sitting there on an excruciatingly hot afternoon, traipsing around on the pavement out there with the public and staff. You know, I have, I just, I'm sorry. I think we need to get to this, and I can't speak for any of my colleagues, so I just want to speak for myself. I appreciate the sustainability of it, I want to see that, but I'm prepared to vote on a level today and instruct our professionals to take it forward.
Any other comments?
Ready for comments?
Yes. Well, any other questions? Okay, then I'm ready for comments. Friedman.
I think it's a nice design. I'm looking forward to seeing it. I'm sorry that we don't have the numbers today about what the different levels of LEED would do in terms of operating budget. I'm going to make an assumption that, just from what I've seen from other projects, that by going gold, we'll have a longer recoup time, but that it'll catch up and then we'll start to see more savings. And because of that, because I think in five years, 10 years, we'll be glad we made that investment, I would support the gold level.
Okay, I'll make my comments. I'm very pleased with the new design. I think it's going to fit in much better on that corner. And once again, the idea was to build a pool. We're building a pool here. We're not building a pool house. It's a little more elaborate than a pool house, I know. But, anyway, I like the colors specifically, by the way. I think that's going to really look real nice, so I'm very happy. Now, I want to move forward as fast as we possibly can. I want to have that noted construction expert, Mr. Dave Ahern, to be involved this summer. I want him sweating on the grounds this summer, so the sooner we get to it, the better. In terms of the different LEED categories, you know, I think we're almost there with the silver. I don't think that's even a question. I would also prefer the gold level. I don't want it to hold us up, though. I mean, I just want to move to try to get to that gold level. It's going to be a self-certification, correct? I mean, we're not paying the LEEDs organization to have that stamp, is that correct?
Actually, the project does need to be registered to get that certification with the Green Building Council.
Right, well, we haven't discussed that yet, whether there is a majority of the City Council that feels the need to pay the required sum of money to get an official, and I see the LEEDs has a little R, which means it is a registered trademark. So I would like us at this point, or I'd like the staff at this point, to move towards that gold level. I mean, you know what the criteria is, so move towards that gold level certification without, you know, necessarily thinking about going to the organization to get it. But, anyway, I'm very happy that you've reduced the size, 1,000 square feet is a lot of square footage, and I think it's going to work really well. So those are my comments. Mr. Draymond, then Mr. Najarian.
Well, as to the design, I am happy with the design. I appreciate the time that the staff took to air the building site down by 1,000 square feet and the associated costs. I think, obviously, I think we all believe that the addition of a community pool for the city of Glendale and in this area is terrific, and I appreciate the staff's time and patience in bringing this along all this, all these many years. So, having said that, I think we have a question that is problematic, and that is, as it relates to this, Mr. Starbird, was it June, was June of 2008?
I think it was July 1 of 2008.
Summer of 2008, anyway. That is not a, if we are sticking with that, it is not a question for us as to whether it is a, it's a public project. So based on that vote, which was a unanimous vote, we do have to have it. It does have, doesn't it not have to be certified?
Based on the council's motion, the motion indicated that all public and public-private projects, meaning projects that we participate in, shall be built to LEEDs silver status, silver standing, and receive LEED certification. Now, I've anticipated with tonight's discussion, depending on which direction you go, we may very well be bringing that back for modification, but that was your direction in July of 2008.
Right. And so I think that bears on what you were saying, Mr. Mayor, because when you're saying, well, it doesn't have to be LEED with their stamp, well, yeah, it may. And so, anyway, I will support LEED silver level on this. I would love to see us look at gold, but I also see the associated price tag. And I am also interested in what happens when we revisit that resolution because it necessarily affects the price tag of the project, and it bears on whether or not and how quickly we have a comprehensive policy or ordinance dealing with construction in the city in general and what kind of sustainability and LEED levels. So, anyway, I'm prepared to support at least silver, and I like the design, and I'm ready to move forward.
And that was Ms. Friedman's question in terms of the money. The 400,000 was for the actual equipment and not for the certification from the organization. Does anyone know, just a ballpark figure, how much the certification would cost, let's say at the gold level? Is that an extra 25, 50,000?
I can't talk about that.
Just a ballpark figure, 15, 20?
I'm sorry?
Between 5 and 10.
Between 5 and 10.
Between 5 and 10, okay, all right. Mr. Najarian.
I'm, my first concern is to echo Mr. Draymond's remarks that we move forward on this with all due speed. We're looking at an opening when?
2011, summer of 2011.
2011, so I hope we can meet that schedule. As far as the LEEDs certification goes, and no offense to the Green Building Coalition, but the fact that it's certified with a trademark on the upper right-hand corner doesn't do anything for me. What's important for me is that we do incorporate energy efficiency in both the design and the materials and all the ancillary equipment that's used. I would be happy with something that meets the silver level. I shy away from gold because for 200,000, I mean, this money's been tough to come by, and I went nuts two years ago when they shortchanged us $90,000 in the CDBG allocation. and I went nuts two years ago when they shortchanged us $90,000 in the CDBG allocation. And, I mean, gold would be great, but at that price tag, I think silver is nothing to be ashamed of. I think it's quite distinguishable for us.
Ms. Friedman, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest that before we make that, I don't think we have, we really have the information to make that determination today because if they come back and say that going, that doing the gold level saves $100,000 a year, you might have a different thought. So, I think we need to say definitely at least silver, but we'd like to hear what that increase in level translates to in operating cost before we can know for sure.
I would adopt that sentiment. Any other comments from the Housing Authority?
Just happy to have pool in that area because I remember my son was going, the old one, and he was missing when it's gone, so.
Okay, well, maybe you can bring grandchildren's in the next few years. Okay, do we need a motion or do? Mr. Starbird?
So you don't break your arm. While working on the numbers on the payback on gold certification, that's not going to hold up our proceeding now with the basic design look on the pool?
No.
Okay.
All right, do we need a motion or?
You have a motion, yes, you do. A motion of 1A, and might want to include the project goal should be to move forward in a manner that's consistent with lead's silver standard level with a continuing review of the numbers and other options to reach the gold level.
I'll move 1A with that language stated by the city attorney.
Second?
Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Consistent with my previous position, I will support the design, but I will not vote to send, put out a contract when we do not have the maintenance and operation identified in the budget. Aye.
Aye. Mayor Quintero?
Okay, roll call for the-
No, I think-
None required.
Okay. All right, next, please.
Motion to adjourn for the council?
So moved.
Second? We are adjourned for the city council.
For housing?
So moved. Second?
Housing's adjourned.